Meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held September 20. Deputy Clerk, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Holes.
Here.
Councilmember Carradis-Abseth. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Mary Linsky.
Here. Thank you. And please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next. Land or city manager, the public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmember?
I think a number of us went to Thunder Valley Rally. And I heard the band, I didn't go Friday night, but I heard the band was excellent on Friday night. And Saturday, some of the, or one of the vendors at least ran a food, so that's a good sign, I think, so. Last, but the fight over in the corner, boxing match they had.
Our fire chief put on a 911 memorial walk up at Mingus Union High School. I was able to attend that. Really appreciate you putting that on year after year. It's great. And that same day, I was able to speak at the Verde Valley Sanctuary celebration, which was great. Brought my two daughters there and got to meet their new executive director. And she's got some great plans for their organization. So there's going to be a lot of growth there in the next few years, which. State of the Verde Watershed Conference is coming up here the end of next week. So if you haven't registered, you ought to. I'm moderating a panel on river cities, challenges and opportunities. So we're going to get up. Superior will be up on our panel. They're, they're actually, if you don't know, Superior is on Queen Creek. And they're flowing water through Queen Creek. It's been dry for many years now, but they have a project to flow water through there. So we're going to talk about that. Sierra Vista will be there as well as Steve Ayers from Camp Verde talking about, you know, some of the opportunities they have going on as river cities. So, so you should attend that. And also Verde Valley Homeless Coalition has their dinner fundraiser, which is October 8th. Tickets are still available. They're 75 bucks. It's going to be great food, tacos. There's going to be sangria, local wine. Cove Mesa is donating the wine, so it's going to be exceptional wine. And there'll be raffle prizes and all kinds of great stuff. DJ music. It's going to be a great event. So you should come out and join us that evening and raise money for the homeless coalition as well. Mr. Giuliani's class at Desert Star for civics day. I'm excited about that. It's fifth grade class. It's a lot of fun. One of my favorite things to do. And Gamma, the Great Arizona Mayor's Association, I'm the president of this association. We're hosting a legislative question and answer session, which is going to be on October 5th at 4:00 PM. This is a virtual event. It's a webinar. It won't be a debate, but it'll be, most of the legislators in four districts that Gamma represents will be answering questions. It's before the ballots are mailed out or before, you know, Election Day, of course. And if you would like to attend the webinar, get ahold of me and I'll email watch at your own convenience. And.
Yes, Mayor Council, I've got a few items here. Starting off with, the public is invited to attend the next meeting of the Cottonwood Community Awareness Group with Vice Mayor Narin. These meetings help connect our citizens to the government process. The topics of each meeting will vary and no registration is required to attend. The next meeting will take place at the Cottonwood Public Library. Second, there will be pizza. Okay.
Thank you.
You can enjoy live music and good shopping at Old Town Music and the Market this Friday, September 23rd. The fun starts at 5:00 PM at the Old Town Activity Park. Room Zero will be playing throughout. Oldtownmusicandthemarket.org for any updates. We also have Verde River Day is back for 2022 at Dead Horse State Park this Saturday, September 24th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. With fishing, food, hikes, exhibits, activities, and plenty of entertainment for all folks of all ages. Visit cottonwoodchamberaz.org for more information. The public is also invited to attend the City Council Neighborhood Meeting on Thursday, September 29th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Mountain View United Methodist Church, Verde. City Council members and talk with them about all things that are Cottonwood. The Cottonwood Area Transit System will be expanding their services as of October 1st to Jerome. In an effort to better serve the community at large, Cottonwood Area Transit will add three stops to Jerome on Thursdays via the Red Line route that goes through Clarkdale. If you have any questions, please contact the CAT office at 928-634-2287. The Cottonwood, the Cottonwood Police Department will be having their National Night Out event on Wednesday, October 5th from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the Cottonwood Kids Park. This event is free for the whole family and includes martial arts demonstrations, taser deployments, SWAT, and nine, K-9 demos. There will be free hot dogs, hamburgers, popcorn, soda, and water, and much more. Please feel free. Nator at 928-634-4246, or kmurray@cottonwoodaz.gov for more information. Also, the Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to introduce a new program called Cottonwood Family Campout, happening October 8th, 9th at Riverfront Park. This program invites families to enjoy an introductory experience to learn about the fundamentals of camping. The fee is $100 for a family of four, and spots are limited. For more information or to register, call Joe Sulfaro, Joe Sulfaro, I think I butchered that one, at jsulfaro@cottonwoodaz.gov. He's a big guy. He's going to hurt me. The Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting their annual Halloween trunk-or-treat event on Monday, October 31st at, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Families will enjoy this free trick-or-treating event that will also have bounce houses and other games. If you would like to have your own spot to set up your own car trunk and hand out candy, please contact Parks and Recreation Department at 928-639-3200. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. And comment, comments are limited to a three-minute time period. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to address the council about an item which is not on the agenda? Okay. All right, we're going to move on then to unfinished business. We have four items this evening under unfinished business. And the first is ordinance number 721, adopting Cottonwood Municipal Airport Rates, Fees, and Charges. This is the second final reading.
Mayor Council, Jeff Tripp, Airport Manager. We've received no additional comments since the last meeting on September 6th regarding the rates and fees.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Tripp? No. Okay. Anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? No. All right. Please.
If I can see it. Excuse me. I move to adopt ordinance number 721, updating airport rates, fees, and charges with an effective date of November 1, 2022.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Wilder made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Holes.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin.
Yes.
And Mary Linsky.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great. Will you please read ordinance number 721 by title only?
Ordinance number 721, an ordinance of the Marin City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Cottonwood Municipal Airport Rates, Charges, and Fees.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, item two is ordinance number 718, annexing into the city approximately six acres of land located at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and River Avenue. 471. This is the second final reading. Evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development. Two weeks ago, we held the first reading of two. Accompanying adoption of new zoning on that area. We have not received any additional comments since that point. There were some questions after the meeting about whether somebody could withdraw a signature. And the last date that you could withdraw a signature is the same day that we turned in the applicant, or turned in the signed petitions, which would have been July 27th. Other than that, we don't have any additional information to present on either of those two items. I do have a map that we could bring up if there are questions.
Okay. Questions from? Okay. All right. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council on this item?
Mayor and Council, before we start, I wanted just to mention, did everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we did. Thank you. If anyone would like to address the council, you're welcome to, you come up, you've got three minutes to speak to council, and you can fill out a form afterwards. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I was at the meeting, the last meeting. I just came to kind of get some information. I'd heard a lot of talk and chatter in the neighborhood about what was going on. I wanted to come down here and make sure that I got all the facts before I spoke. That's why I waited until this meeting. But I just kind of want, if you guys quite understand where we're coming from as a community, we're. Long time. It's a unique area, very rural setting, but you're close to town. So it's just something that we're trying to protect. We all got large investments in the area, in our homes. We want to protect our neighborhood. You guys are doing this based on request of one property owner. The one thing that I haven't really gotten to the bottom of is exactly why. What's the main reason? What's your motivation for doing this? River access? We got Riverfront Park. Why can't we do river access there? We have a lot of other options. I just, you know, we feel that, okay, if this thing goes through, if you vote for it, it could be a good thing for tourism in the Verde Valley. But what are our assurances that this gets developed and then five years down the road, all of a sudden, we decide that, oh, we don't have enough access, we don't have enough parking, so we're going to blow a road out this direction and go this way. And then all of a sudden, we've got roads going through our rural neighborhood that we don't really want. So I guess, in closing, I just, I want to know what your assurances are that this isn't just some plan to just develop that area beyond the scope of what you've already told us.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Folks, there's forms in the back if you'd like to address the council. I received another one from Mr. Wilkerson. Evening.
Evening, Mayor, to the City Council. I also spoke at the last one. We talked about different things and. Private owner. The gentleman over here said they had some outreach about a vote, whether it could be taken back at a certain point. I'd like to clarify, I think that was probably APS, and he can clarify better because he's higher up in the ranks than I am. And why are you weighing it? You have no stakeholder in this community besides a box on this property. So why are you voting yea or nay at that point? The individual that voted for APS didn't realize what the community's support was. Someone take the vote back, because she made it clear to all of us who contacted her that she didn't realize there was such a passionate ordinance around this with the community that's in this area. And she, you know, found out, she cannot take her vote back. But again, like I said last time, why is APS getting a vote? Because they're taxable income. It's by law. So you guys are here, you have two votes, two yays out of two votes, okay? APS have to vote it in. As a city council, you have petitions in front of you, multiple people that live in this area that don't want this to happen. Thirty plus more, I mean. Versus one property owner that wants it. One property owner and one taxable income, APS, who I think is kind of regretting their votes because they got so many phone calls. Ultimately, if this gets voted in, you know, you guys said in your tenure plan, you had no tenure plan to. It's going to be done with this property. The people there don't want it to be developed for parks, kayaking, recreational, because we all live there. We don't want it to look like Pagosa Springs, where you look out at your river and you see 600 kayakers and tubers floating by, and it's, it's an exit point for whatever. That's all assumptions and hypotheses. So if you're going to stand here and say, there's nothing going to be developed for the next 10 years, and you're going to be true to your word, then you probably wouldn't be getting this outcry. But again, like the last gentleman said, what is your plan? If that's the case. But ultimately, if this does get passed and it gets annexed in, then I would just like to say to everyone out there. Is to go to state parks. State parks, they're right. They said it themselves last meeting. The gentleman that was over here that's not here now. So if we all petition state parks. State parks in Phoenix and make our voices heard. If they're not being heard here.
Lisa Gray.
Need to voice my opposition to the River Avenue annexation. Let me first start. Wanted to say when standing before you the last time. I understand state statute and deal with. Statutes take humankind into consideration, needing only the approval of direct property owner next to the annexation, and the idea that the. Responding neighbors. Property owner in question does not reside on the property and therefore has no personal stake in this decision. The financial or business stake for that property owner. The only thing that keeps me sane, and I thought the map would be up there. Map that is marked 014A. This. And I, and we and our neighbors are here to keep this annexation. Of life, as small as you might feel that is. I've heard that there could possibly be no change at all, which is hard to believe. To think that someone somewhere doesn't have a potential plan. Now or in the future. We as neighbors have stood before you previously and opposed. They are. I would hope that the Marin Council will take into consideration that we as a community, as. And what our needs are. Again, to take only into consideration one landowner with the idea that this decision does not affect. We are all here to show you that we have become a tight-knit community without annexation closing in on us, and we aim to keep it that way with your help. Passed down for years and will continue to be. Everyone has their own opinion of what could or will happen, but simply with the number of landowners, landowners before you that will be affected by the. City. Or are you able to call this a loss due to opposition? And of course, visit it in a different. You know, and I kept thinking, this isn't written down, but I kept thinking, how can we say that what happens at Bocchi doesn't affect Colt or affect this property? Or, you know, this is how far we are from this annexation piece. So if you really think. Live, then, I mean, if you live in an apartment and you just pay your rent, it's one thing, but to live somewhere. Important to you, then. But thanks, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Thank you. All right. And then we have Ms. Eleanor.
Council, my name is Eleanor Gray, and I thank you for the opportunity to voice my opposition toward the River Avenue annexation. I live one street over from River Avenue on. And I'm sure I will reside there many more as I am the homeowner. This land has been in my family for generations, and it will stay that way. I remember sitting here as a child, as my parents and neighbors. Sitting, the idea is upsetting. While I, I hope all the people this affects will be here in 10 years. Almost assured that I will be here. Living in all my life. But I'm afraid that if you continue towards. Way toward my land and that that piece. But my neighbors, my family, and my future family. It is my. To my small but deep-rooted community, that this will affect not only the here and now, but future generations. Thank you.
That's the last form I received. Thank you. We'll go ahead and.
So, Mr. Davis, could you come on out? And I'm just kind of. And if I'm understanding it correctly, maybe some others.
We're talking about three pieces of land here, I believe. Two parcels owned by the state parks. So as I understand.
And a portion of right-of-way, excuse me.
Okay, right-of-way. Is a, an invisible boundary moves. State parks, still own state parks. Even if the city had a desire to put public. We could not do it. We have. Doubt. Private property goes, we. Belongs in the city half. Standing as far as annexation goes. They think it's a land grab. All it. If you want to build something, you have to go to the county and, if you want to develop it, and go through the county to do it. If that boundary moves and you're in the city, you have to come to the. On these properties. We cannot even annex. And you ask for it. Perhaps. I don't really see that happening over in Bridgeport. I don't think there's anybody there that wants that. You have to come to and ask us for, and then we'll consider it. Understanding regarding this annexation, nothing's going to change. Nothing you're ever going to see. I really doubt whether that private property owner there has any plans to change anything that's. This, they're just, there's no reality to them. Nobody's looking to do anything nefarious. We're not sitting around in a back room trying to figure. It's just not, it's just not happening. So that's.
That's correct, Councilmember Matthews. Mary Linsky. Of the annexation area is six acres, five of which is. Portion of the River Avenue right-of-way that would go to the city. State parks for those two state parks parcels, whether it gets. What to do with those, those parcels.
Thank you. Any other council members with questions or? Go ahead, Councilmember.
You were wrong in one, in one thing, where you said that nothing's going to change in the state parks area. I think it. That the city will probably go in and help. To and maybe clean it up. There's been a large, well, a few people, large. Area right now as far as trash. The chance it'll get cleaned up. So in my mind, that's for the better.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. There was a positive element there that I.
Any other thoughts to share, council?
Similar to what, I think, Mr. Harrison, you brought up a very good point. Just even having an open conversation on the record. That we are laying our intentions out on the record. And my intentions with this annexation. To the folks that are. We were talking about the one. For council in the group earlier in the year. So tonight, again, it's a very limited, narrow area, and we're not discussing. We were approached by a property owner who is in an unfortunate situation. County and city with a boundary line that runs smack dab. Care to allocate the time and resources to address this problem. So the property owner, to my understanding, approached the city and. After the last meeting that the lines were drawn, the way they were drawn. And so it's not, there was a request voiced as far as can we just annex. We can't actually proceed and be compliant with the statute if that were to be modified. And please again, correct me if I.
Councilmember Henry, Mayor, the private property. The state property because, because there. Property is not subject to taxation and therefore they are. So a private property, some private. Property is needed within the tax, within the area. Is there, and according to the State Department of Revenue. So. Needed for a, for a petition to go forward. The, that's.
Thank you. So since that last meeting, I've had many folks who... ...as Councilmember Matthews pointed out, there is a lot of misinformation circulating. This, to my knowledge, is no side deal or side discussions with regard to a river access point... ...traffic there, there... ...as a whole, nor do we have the legal ability to develop property that we do not own. Pointed out earlier, there's, there's not land available and open for development in... ...from would be with the property owners, state parks... ...able area if that were to occur, which I doubt that it would occur. So... ...s intentions are, is, is important, and I think that's something that we should... ...breathe with or is not accurate, then please, this, I think, would be an appropriate time to correct my understanding... ...the facts that I just laid out. I would want to know if facts were substantiated as well.
Councilmember Tosca. Before we would do anything, the state would have to come to us to request our help to do anything. ...for them, if they were even interested at this point in time... ...development on that particular property, and we would always inform our council before we made...
Is there any other identifiable solution to the private... ...you know, that... ...down the middle of their property?
I don't believe that on their own, they would, they would qualify for an annexation. Am I correct?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Sky Dallas Community Development Director. ...do that annexation. As you mentioned, it does create issues. When they want to come in and do something, we've had... ...money they told us to deal with, and so we have.
I could just add, it's a... ...that can occur under Arizona law is from a municipal... ...unincorporated jurisdiction.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Henry.
We have a similar situation on the south side of... Starting at Monty de Sorro. We have houses that are split right down the middle. Half of... ...lines were drawn way back when. The homeowners in those homes have a problem when they want... ...city, do they go... ...same situation, the owner is trying to clean up a mess so that they can control their own property. To governmental agencies. The city for half of your property to have permission to do anything and go to... This is the reasoning this person has approached the city. They're just trying to clean... ...on their control, government agencies drew a line, and those lines happened to draw... So it's an understandable situation... ...so that they know who to go to when they have a problem or when they need to or want to do some change to their property. Want half of my house in the county and half in the city and not knowing who to go to when I want to make an improvement or change.
Holes, to kind of go with that, too, and I don't want to speak for police or fire departments, sometimes that can create... ...who responds because you're halfway in. And some of the residents didn't know who responded because they were half in the city.
I'll just add that I am also unaware... ...a reasonable thing for this property owner to request... ...to address it. To do anything, and as a city, we can't.
Correct. Okay. I agree with my, my colleagues up here. I think that... ...opportunity to clean up jurisdictional discrepancies on a single piece of property. The city limits some... Partners with state parks over the years. We are a conservation-minded community, so that's always... Land that's along the river corridor. The benefits of, of being able to clean up... Some of the homeless encampment... That's, you know, that's what we do well down along the Greenway here. You know, we've, we've worked really well with our state parks. I also understand, and I want to be... ...accession, I think it's, it's, it's a very real tangible thing, and I get that. There's a fear that, of city... Council, I know, really values our... Preserve that even as the city of Cottonwood grows. In this area, there just... People may fear. There's one piece of property that's already developed, and then there's state... Remain as such, and anything that happens to it will be done. Develop that, we don't know. So I understand your... I hope that your, your fears... Just an annexation that... If, if they come back to council, again, it'll be in a very public setting and a process... And we're not out to annex any folk... ...with us, and I don't see that changing in the future. So that's all I have. Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to... ...private property here is in favor and has signed the petition but did not approach the... Originally was three separate areas of annex... ...other areas, not this one. But when we did...
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have...
Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, let's have you read that ordinance by title only, please.
...an ordinance of the mayor and city council... ...certain territory contiguous to the city limits of the city... ...in size located at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and River Avenue pursuant to the provisions of...
Okay, thank you. And next is ordinance number 719. Second, final reading.
Mr. Mayor, we touched on it earlier. ...because we do not zone our right-of-way. So it just touches the two... Mentioned earlier.
Okay. And just to be clear... Adopt zoning that's as close as possible to the underlying county zoning, correct?
Or density than what's allowed currently in the county... ...are proposing residential use at all. It's... Open space and park facilities.
Okay. All right, council, any discussion? Okay. 19.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember... Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Last, under unfinished business... Building and safety and planning and zoning divisions.
Council, again, ordinance number 720, second reading. Thirty, third-party consultants and temporary certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion on this? All right, then I'll motion to approve ordinance number 720.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Holes seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, please read...
You want 719 as well?
Uh, yep.
Ordinance number 719, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County... ...zone area. An ordinance number 720... ...city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting new... ...and zoning divisions.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is consent... Will be approved by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council... Will be removed from the consent agenda. Three items this evening. First is contract with Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the city and to purchase related equipment and supplies. Item two, contract with Governor's Office of Driving Enforcement in the city. And item three is cooperative use of the city of Goodyear's contract... New automated read, automated read water meters and associated telemetry... Have pulled. No. All right, I'll motion to... Was that Henry? Second it, all in favor? And there's no new business. Motion, Vice Mayor seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.